We have no, yeah, we have no participants either.
Nope.
I guess because it's, it's an off night. Everybody forgot that it was Wednesday.
Want to call to order the public meeting, the pledge of allegiance? We'll start with announcements. Observance of Veterans Day Township offices will be closed Monday, November 11th. The 2025 budget open house will be held on November 21st, 10 to 12 p.m. in Keene Hall. The contractor for the Bear Road project will begin site preparation work in early November and work will continue until spring 2025. Work will begin on the Stratford Park parking lot for stormwater improvement project in mid-November and will continue until early 2025. The parking lot will be closed during construction. The contractor for the Valley Forge Road Signal project will begin work in early November, they're actually there now, and work will continue through May 2025. Approval of the minutes, we hear a motion to approve the minutes of October 21st.
It's moved.
We hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? The minutes are approved. The board met in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss legal matters. First item is preliminary budget discussion. Mr. Duraco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. To help us kind of continue our discussion about the preliminary budget, put together just, you know, a brief little presentation that I'll go through, a couple of slides, just to kind of refresh our memories where we're at and what we're looking forward to as we move along through the budget process. For 2024, we're expecting a little over a million dollar surplus for operating and what that's going to allow us to do is take all of that, that money and offset, you know, our capital purchases and projects, the majority of them. For 2025, we're proposing a 6.3% tax increase. You know, we're starting to roll forward into the, you know, the final budget and so, you know, obviously my goal at the end of the day is to try to get that number down as much as we possibly can. As a reminder, you know, looking in 2025, the preliminary budget was relatively flat revenue year over year and, you know, we had a major focus on public safety and adding three new officers to the budget. The, you know, we're looking at using about $812,000 out of reserves for operating purposes. That's a little over $125,000 more than what we budgeted in 2024. However, again, you know, year, year in and year out, we always try to find budgetary savings. Hopefully, you know, you have a couple of revenue items that exceed the budget and so we're always hopeful that that number continues to come down. We're also planning to use a little over $2 million for our capital purchases and projects and I'll get in a little bit more of the capital plan moving forward. For stormwater, you know, essentially the same thing, you know, no increase for taxes. We're able to offset, you know, we over budgeted in 2024 for debt service, just, you know, not knowing where we were going to land and so that, that offsets other increases in operating. Capital, you see, you know, we have seven projects ongoing for, in stormwater between Steve and Darren. Stratford Park, as we just mentioned, is going to be starting. Krabby Creek, I think Steve said, I mean, they're, they're moving through that project. I think we're going to be done probably before, before the end of the month is, is what we're targeting, so that's moving fast. Bear Road, we're up and running. We're, we're well into the engineering and design of Woodcrest, Williston, Upper Wee. That's a, you know, a $3 million plus project at the end of the day and so, you know, Steve's been working on that. We're working on the Gregory Lane and Jenkins Arboretum project, you know, that, that engineering's underway. We're, tonight on our agenda, we're actually proposing and looking for authorization of purchase 595 Park Ridge under the Pima floodplain acquisition program. And then we have a infrastructure project, big infrastructure project on West Valley and Jeffrey Lane going down, you know, the hill there. So, you know, we're quite busy and especially focusing on stormwater in this budget. Emergency services, again, operating budget up to 3.24 million. Proposed tax increase for that section is, is 28, but it's, it's again, it's under $40 a household. It increases funding for, you know, our fire companies by $360,000. And then again, it budgets for the full year of our newly appointed fire administrator. Breaking down the tax bill, this is what your, you know, this is what your tax bill, your average tax bill looks like. Again, where, you know, if you're, you're looking at all of our departments across the township, you know, this is where your money's going. Average tax bill for next year, $990. Again, majority of that is obviously comprised of the general fund. Most of our services are covered under that, but you'll see, you know, stormwater and fire and EMS are, you know, they're growing. These are important funds that, and priorities that the board has made and so you, you see that reflected in the, in the investments that we're making. Our capital budget for 2025, yes, I would definitely, I would characterize this as an ambitious capital plan. Overall, it's, it's $25 million worth of projects. 12 million, you know, just about half of it is coming from grant funding. We've been extremely successful over the last couple of years at seeking, seeking these grants out, applying for them and getting them. The other half of that is, is going to come from the township. You'll see, you know, the major investments in stormwater and, and again, the majority of the stormwater funding is, is coming from grant funding. And so, you know, we'll continue to look at grant opportunities. One of the ones that, that we didn't necessarily consider for, you know, in the preliminary budget, what we're looking at is an LSA grant, local share grant from the state. I'm going to be searching, you know, seeking out a million dollars worth of funding for, for Friendship Park. Again, that's the type of stuff that, you know, while we're budgeting for, there, there are certain things in the budget that, you know, if we can't seek, if we can't obtain grant funding for, probably not going to say, let's move forward at this point. We're going to keep trying to find ways to leverage, you know, our existing tax dollars. So, you know, just kind of wrapping things up where we are today is, again, we're here to discuss the preliminary budget a little bit more, answer any potential questions. At our next board meeting, we'll, we'll have a public hearing on the, on the preliminary budget and at that point I would, you know, again, we'll, we'll seek any input for changes that we want to make to the final budget. At our December 2nd meeting, I'll discuss any of the changes that I've made from the preliminary to the final, go over those and then we'll ask the board to authorize the public hearing for millage in our budget to, to wrap up on our, at our December 16th meeting. So, that's all I had for tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Yeah, no, thank you, Joe. Just a couple of comments I was going to make, sort of odd that there's nobody here, but I'll make them for my fellow supervisors anyway. First, I just want to thank Bill and Joe, the staff, I mean, you guys, you know, Steve Burgo and Darren and Aaron and everyone in the staff for all the hard work that went into the budget, because I know it's, it's a lot of work, this is not a small book. Pat, of course, all the, all the stuff that goes into it, I really appreciate. So, in this budget, we focused on public safety and infrastructure. We're getting three police officers, seven FTEs in fire administration, fire safety. The things I looked at in the budget, just for benefit of the, of you guys, is, I mean, we're, our general fund real estate tax is increasing $725,000. That's the total real estate tax, you know, that we're taking from the residents. We're spending, just, just the police budget increase is $790,000 in salary benefits. So, you're getting a lot of value for that increase and it's all public safety. I mean, that's, that's three officers on the street, that's salary increases for our officers and, and staff. That's all public safety. We budgeted $811,000, 812, I think you said, for general fund reserves to basically balance our operations. That's not something we want to do. We want to be using our, our reserves to balance operations, but this year we balanced, we budgeted 684,000 and we have a million dollar surplus. So, there's work to be done there, there's a couple of ideas we're already talking about and that's something we're going to continue to focus on. When I look at the increase for emergency services, it's about $600,000. 500,000 of that is going to personnel. It's a fire administrator and it's six FTEs of firefighters, oh, sorry, firefighters. The other 110,000 is essentially related to the new firehouse that we're building. So, you're, again, public safety, a lot of value for the money that we're spending. And then I think you just summarized it better than I will, which is, we, we have $25 million in capital projects, half of which are funded by grants. We have 11.7 million of stormwater projects, 7.7 million are funded by grants. So, we're leveraging the money pretty effectively and I think, I appreciate your comment that you're not going to recommend to do things that don't have grant funding. Like, we're just, I mean, Steve has been remarkable in getting money and that's what we're going to continue that. And the last, and I guess this is more for public consumption, but, you know, we, we have, I have 12 things on the list that we're doing. I mean, the seven you listed, plus we're building the Warner Spur Bridge, the Contention Lane Bridge, the Glen Hardy Road Bridge, we have the Glen Avenue Pump Station and the Station Avenue Forest Main, and then we're building a new firehouse. Like, there's a lot of stuff going on. I mean, just like you think about it. And all of the money is focused on public safety and infrastructure. I mean, there's not, there's all needs, not wants, that we're spending money on. So, anyway, love to hear other comments from the board members, but I want to give you some perspective on what we're doing.
Joe, just, what's the total percentage if you include both the emergency funding and the general funding?
It is, I think, 8.48%, I think was the, the total net increase.
Was that in the presentation?
That was in my original presentation.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that the residents appreciate, sometimes they'll say, oh, you hit the ball here, but as long as that number's there, that's all I...
Preliminary budgets on the website, you know, my, the budget message is included in all that.
It's in the budget letter too. Mr. Rodd, motion to ratify the final municipal sale of TTV equipment, Mr. Duraco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In between meetings, we had finished the sale of some of the excess equipment from the studio and so we just started asking the board to ratify those, that sale.
So, we hear a motion? It's moved. We hear a second?
Second.
Any comments on the board? Any citizen comments? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Well, we have one person now. Motion to adopt Resolution 2024-20, supporting the Royer-Greaves School Local Share Account statewide grant application. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall from our last board meeting, you authorized me doing work with the Royers-Greaves School in their application in cooperation with Representative Shusterman's office. I've started that process, we're working on the grant and should be submitted shortly. And part of that application requires that we actually have a formal resolution from the board since we will be the applicant and securing the funds on their behalf. So, tonight before you is the resolution, making it official that we are going to be the applicant for this project and we'll move forward with the grant application before the deadline. Happy to answer any questions.
And you hear a motion? So, move. We hear a second?
Second.
Any comment from the board? Public comment? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, Roca, oh, sorry, it's right on there too, sorry about that. Supervisor Humble.
Aye.
Supervisor Holtz.
Aye.
Supervisor Garcia.
Aye.
Supervisor Waisaki.
Aye.
Supervisor Bascar.
Aye.
Supervisor Johnston-Pugh.
Yes.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Motion to approve the proposal from Allied Video Technologies, AVT, to provide a professional video services to recor, provide professional video services to record Board of Supervisors' meeting in 2025. Mr. Duraco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, our beloved Gene Donahue is actually going to retire, retire and then no longer actually want to show up here and, and do this anymore. And so, you know, we, we need somebody to, to record these and, and control the cameras for us and help us out with that. So, we're asking for, you know, approval of the proposal so that way we can lock in our meeting dates for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Duraco. Do I hear a motion?
It's moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Citizen con, oh, there's nobody there. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Motion to adopt a Resolution 2024-21, approving the meeting and holiday schedule for 2025. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yeah, it is that time of year again, as we prepare for a new calendar year, and as part of that process, before reorganization meeting in January, we have to advertise our meeting and holiday schedule, so this resolution makes it official by posting, it will allow us to post our holiday and meeting schedule before our January meeting. This is a standard procedure we do every year, and happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
This is also a roll call, it's resolution.
Oh, damn it!
Resolution.
Ah, right, right. Supervisor Humble?
Aye.
Supervisor Holt?
Aye.
Supervisor Gussi?
Aye.
Supervisor Waisaki?
Aye.
Supervisor Baskar?
Aye.
Supervisor Johnston Pugh?
Yes.
I vote aye, sorry about that. Motion to adopt Resolution 2024-22, approving the five-year winter services agreement between Trudifferent Township and PennDOT, Mr. Duraco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is something that I've worked on with Mr. Fitzgerald and the solicitor. This is a continuation of our winter services agreement with PennDOT. Like I said, it's, it's a five-year agreement, which is standard. This continues, you know, we get some funding from the state to, to salt and pay, um, salt and plow certain state roads, no changes from, you know, the last agreement, other than getting paid a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Duraco. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any comments from the board?
So, Mr. Duraco, just a quick one, is any material change between the prior agreement and this agreement?
No.
Thank you.
Increase in reimbursement, that's all. This is a roll call vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Humble?
Aye.
Supervisor Holt?
Aye.
Supervisor Gussi?
Aye.
Supervisor Waisaki?
Aye.
Supervisor Baskar?
Aye.
Supervisor Johnston Pugh?
Yes.
And I vote aye, thank you. Motion to approve Brown and Caldwell proposal for sanitary sewer relining and concrete encasement design and construction services for the Willis-Woodcrest Upper Weetley Road Stormwater Project, Mr. Burgow.
Chairman Miller and members of the board, this proposal was submitted by Brown and Caldwell, our township sanitary sewer engineer. It includes proposal for design services and construction inspection for concrete encasement and sewer line, sanitary sewer relining in the areas between Woodcrest, Willis, and Willis Roads. It's part, and parcel of the areas that, that the board acquired for that additional property where the stormwater basin will go in, and some of the surrounding areas. The proposal will cover their design and, and inspection services for that work. It is necessary because it's basically sewer lines that are in and around where we're going to be doing major storm sewer improvements, as well as some of the surrounding areas. It will be funded from the sanitary sewer fund, and the amount of their proposal was $40,164.05.
Thank you, Mr. Burgow, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any board comments?
Yes. I would hope that after this project is completed, that the township will move on to completing the, the storm sewer work needed at Upper Weetley, where it joins to Old Eagle School Road, or, no, excuse me, West Valley Road. The people there have been very vocal about the flooding that occurs at their area, and I know that this is a different part of Upper Weetley, but they will still need their, their section fixed as well. Just don't want us to forget about it. Thank you.
Exactly what section are you talking about?
Where Upper Weetley, it kind of, it, you've got the one Upper Weetley at Old Eagle School Road, and then you've got the other section where Weetley comes out at West Valley Road, like, on the way to the post office. And so the residents there have pointed out that there's a lack of drainage on Saunders Road above them, and so they're getting extra flooding that's coming down to their area, and not just from storm sewers, but it's coming down the property that's in between their street and up into Saunders Street. So, this is something I've documented, you know, over the couple of years, I'll send it back to you again, but I just, you know, want us to be on top of this. You know, they've, Treffany Road is right there as well, where it comes into Upper Weetley, but I know that the residents there have been very vocal, they tell me they have, in writing to the township about it. I've seen some of their written communication, but I just don't want them to get forgotten. They've shown me video of where it's, like, the rapids coming down from the, the properties between them, just south of them, between Upper Weetley and Saunders Road, where you can see how it comes down and splashes up and over, all the way down to, I guess it's Jeffrey, the cul-de-sac that's down there.
Yeah, we are doing a project from West Valley down to Jeffrey. We are doing a project there, but we, we don't have anything on the books yet for anything for Saunders.
All right. I'll, I'll send it again.
Okay.
And we can, you know, see if that's where the two, the rubber meets the road. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other supervisor comment? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the release number two for 958 Mount Pleasant Avenue in the amount of $44,5176, balance remaining $42,758.23, Mr. Burgow.
Chairman Miller and members of the board, this release request from the 958 Mount Pleasant Avenue project, it covers some stormwater improvements, inlets and piping, as well as some grading and topsoil. It has been inspected by our inspector at Princeton Hydro, and we are recommending the board the release in the amount stated this evening.
Do we hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Motion to authorize advertisement of a public hearing on December 2nd, 2024, to consider and possibly adopt an ordinance to authorize acquisition of approximately a .777-acre parcel located at 595 Park Ridge Drive, Mr. Duraco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As I mentioned earlier, this is part of the Pima Acquisition Program, and so this, you know, the majority of this is funded by that grant. As required by our charter, we have to have a public hearing anytime we purchase real estate, and so, I've worked with the solicitor on the agreement of sale. The homeowner has looked it over, I believe they've approved it, they're ready to sign it when the board approves it, so, you know, that's what we're looking to authorize tonight, and then we'll close sometime early in January.
I, I did want to just clarify, they have actually signed it already. I don't think the version you have is signed, but they have already executed it.
Do we hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I, I think, Mr. McKenna, J, K, and L are going to be delayed until...
Yes, I was going to make a request for the board to defer items J, K, and L, they all relate to the same project, for the lifetime living project. As late as this afternoon, counsel for the applicant and I were discussing the stormwater O&amp;M agreement, we're not quite there on those terms in that agreement, so rather than do it piecemeal, we agreed that we'd like to take these off the agenda for tonight and a moment tentative to your next meeting this month.
Do we need to motion or anything?
I don't think you do typically, we're not adding anything to it, you're welcome to take the motion, but otherwise, I would just say...
No, I'm fine delaying it.
We're just saying it's been tabled.
Yeah, that's fine, let's table it, that's, I'm good with that. Is everybody here good with that?
Yes.
Okay. That concludes our agenda, any board new matters?
Joe, could you just briefly address the possibility of the local share account statewide grant application for Friendship Park? Just let the board members know about the possibility.
Yeah, so I, I, last week I had met with RVE to discuss, you know, I looked, we went over the capital plan and talked about projects and any opportunities for grant funding, and so, one of the ones that is due at the end of the month, but they, you know, think it's a good opportunity for us, is this local share account funding, similar to the, the application the board just approved. We'll put in another application. I'm going to request probably a million dollars worth of funding that will go towards that project, which would, you know, fund more than half of the project. The overall project for Friendship Park, we're looking at like 1.8 million, so if we get that funding at, at a million, then we'll be able to, you know, hopefully get that project done sooner than later.
Thank you, thank you, I just thought, thought it was exciting, I wanted to let folks know about it.
It's, it's okay, we're about to, any other board ma, new matters? I was going to compliment Joe on his tie. Thank, thank your son for entertaining us, that's really thoughtful. Any citizen new matters? Next meeting is November 18th, 2024. Do we hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.